Up here from close to the bar this is Howard Stone, Gary Anderson, Johnny Revelle, and Greg Graves. These are our four candidates for CA. So we're gonna start out with a three-minute introduction. And the buzz from the room gentlemen is they'd love to hear about your family and where you'd gradually get along with all of that, but they'd also just love to jump right out and tell people where you stand on the committee in the three-minute introduction. So use it as you choose, but there has been some call for getting a road run. So we'll start with Howard. And you'll hear, you'll get the "Hi" sign from Oscar to stop.
Will you give us a minute?
Sir, what would you like me to do?
Give us a minute, will 30 seconds or so?
I can go two, one, perfect. Okay.
All right.
And then when you hear "applaud", you know it's over.
We're actually not gonna applaud because it takes too much time. This is your time, and we've done this before.
You sure you got this one out? Yeah, you only have two minutes left.
It's up to you.
As I look across this room and the seat of delegates in here, this is an excellent representation of what's so wonderful about this county. It's one of the greatest places to live in the United States. Companies are moving here for the moral standard we have, our work ethic, our education level. No elected official can take credit for the growth that's happening in this county. It is a natural phenomenon that is because of the residents, because of you and all of us that live in this county. Every time I hear elected officials saying "I was responsible for this" or "I was responsible for that," I just kinda shake my head. You know Alan Ashton and Ray Norda 30 years ago set up WordPerfect and Nobel? And I think those probably had more to do with the software industry moving into this county than what any government official claims to have had. My name is Howard Stone. I lived in Provo for 30 years. I served a tour duty in the United States Air Force, served an LDS mission, and finished a master's degree of public administration at BYU. I've been working in the software high-tech industry for the last 20 years, the last 10 of which have been in the administration, working with the multimillion-dollar budget of the county and so forth. Growing up, I spent summers on my grandfather's farm milking cows, chickens, sloping hogs. I have a little bit of a knack background. I'm trying to be a master gardener. Now, I'm involved in this race because I'm concerned about the proper role of government at the county level and the federal incursion on our rights through a D21 and other divisive issues. Also, we have an incumbent in this seat that is running for his fifth term. That also concerns me. I'd like to see a fresh set of eyes on the problems that we're all dealing with. I would advise you to check the incumbent's record, his meetings, his dealings over the last many years in office. I feel like with my 20 years of serving the county, law enforcement, working with commissioners, mayors, and so forth in the private sector, I'm uniquely qualified to move forward and serve this committee, serve this county, and I would be honored and humbled to have your consideration. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your service as delegates. It's greatly appreciated.
Hey, my name's Gary Anderson. I am the incumbent. I am, I, let me tell you, not off the top, I'm trying to go on this fifth term. What I was, how old were you?
23.
23. When I was a year younger than this kid, I ran for county commissioner as a young felony prosecutor, elected to a two-year term and a six-year term. My wife, who's standing back there with my daughter, said, "You gotta go make some money." I went and practiced law for 30 years. Seven years ago, Jerry Washburn, who was then the mayor of Orem, some other guys, law enforcement officials, mayor's team, had said, "Utah County, contrary to what we hear, is stacked, we, their, the county has advocated their role in economic development, they will bring business in, we're gridlocked, we don't have a freeway, we don't have commuter rail, we need help to do running." So I did, and, and I am not taking credit for everything I did, but what I did started to change the chemistry. And we now, the reason we have been able to be so successful the last six, seven years during the worst economic downturn since the depression and without raising property taxes is because we are all in this thing together. My dad's an old Navy guy, and he says it takes all hands in the book. We got the best set of mayors, we got the best set of legislators, we got the best set of commissioners, there is, and we stopped saying, "We're not gonna have that company in Provo because we're in Springville and we're gonna fight it for it." We started, all, we figured out that a rise implied race as well shifts. That's how grow the economy, that's how you grow your tax base, that's how you keep tax up. No raise taxes, won't do it, don't need to do it. We turned our sheriff's office into, from a mediocre office to the best. Law enforcement agency in the western United States, not even the state, western United States, we've got the top equipment, the top dogs, the top area. We've got, we've got commuter rail, we've got a plan. I have track record, I want you to go look at my track record, please. I'm the one with the track record, I'm the one with a plan. Do you have heard of my plan? These dogs out here, gotta have a plan. And we've got, this is, this, the Utah Packers Association has said for the last three years, if you know who they are, they're about as conservative as they come, and they have said, "Utah County is the best managed county, doing the best managed state in the nation." I just had a group from the University of Texas call me, we were hired by the National Association of Counties, and they said, "We wanna figure out how you did it in that downturn without raising taxes, we want, we want to package it and teach every county how to do it." We're on a roll. I, I wanna finish what we've started, I want, I'm a little more sure because I've developed a lot of relationships and done a lot of work, and I wanna see it through. Gary Anderson, all you gotta remember is CA for Anderson, A for Anderson. You're gonna hear it.
If I raise a hand, how many of you are first-time delegates? Probably at least half. Congratulations, thank you for, for your efforts. I recognize many of you for many of the different meeting candidates nights. I think this is about our 13th, it's been a crazy three weeks. I actually just flew into town this morning from Cal, and my family's there, at the so-called happiest place on earth, and I'll fly back out to see them tomorrow because of a commitment that I made to them a year ago that we would take them to the national campaign. When I make a commitment especially to the six most important priorities in my life, I follow through. I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss a couple of these nights tomorrow and then Thursday, but that's a commitment that I made to, to my family to be there. To tell you a little bit about myself, I'm from Lehigh, don't hold that against me, please. Whenever we've come down here, you guys have always looked at us and everything sports-wise, so just remember that. I grew up on a farm there in Lehigh, I understand how important agriculture is. I married a girl from American Fork whose family is, is from Spanish Fork, Benjamin, they are farmers down there. They have a lot of acres, they have a lot of property rights, they have a lot of water rights, they wanna make sure are protected, and they have concerns about that, and so do I. My main focuses as a county commissioner are, there's basically three. Number one is proper role of government. What, what should we be doing? We should be providing essential services to our taxpayers, to our citizens, and then we also should be, which is focus number two, is protecting our citizens. The sheriff's office means a great deal to me on a very personal basis, and I was very grateful to them to get the endorsement of the Deputies Association this year, running for county commissioner, and that means a lot to me. I'll do everything I can to make sure that they have what they need to protect us and to protect themselves. And, hold on a minute. And then the last thing is transparency. I think that's a big issue. As I go around to my family and friends and tell them that I'm running for county commissioner, they first say, "Hey, that's great," and they say dumb question, but what is a county commissioner and what do they do? And, and I, I, I think we need to bring that closer to our citizens. We need you and them to understand what our role is. It's very important what we do as, as commissioners, and I think we need to be able to have that education for them so that they can understand that and be more educated in what we can do. Again, I appreciate this opportunity, it's been great to meet everyone here. Real quick, I've been a city councilman in Lehigh for 10 years, and we've seen, and like Howard said, I can't take pride for what Lehigh has become economically-wise, but I see that happening in our county and the potential of economic growth, and we need to have a plan. That plan needs to encompass not only the economic development, but also the agricultural rights of those who have their property. My name's Johnny Revelle, thank you.
My name is Greg Graves. I'm also running for CA. I'm running because we have a debt problem in this county. The reason we have a debt problem is because eight years ago we had zero bonded debt. And what bonded debt, the difference between our GO or our general obligation debt, our bonded debt is, general obligation vote debt, we vote on. Bonded debt, we don't. They secure taxes and increase where needed or whatever they need without having to ask us. I don't agree with that. In eight years, we've gone from zero bonded debt to $275 million, and on the proposed budget this year, commissioners have let us know they're gonna be increasing, put at least another $30 million of bonded debt out there if that's allowed to continue. It's not just the $275 million that's gonna be paid off by 2039, but as we know with our houses, it's not just that amount of money. If you go through and look at the finances, which I have done all the way back to 2008, there's $195 million of interest alone. We pay $22 million a year in interest and principal payments. The problem is, is for the next four years, it's lower than it's going to be, and it's going to grow every four years, and it raises every four years on our budget. That is not a sustainable way of life. That is not real economic growth. My economic plan for growth, I stole right from President Ronald Reagan, who in the 80s took our interest rates from our homes, even though I didn't own much, I was three or four. It was 14%, or so my dad says, 14% on a whole back then, and in eight years, just eight years, he was able to give us the 7% to 8% of interest rates. How? He cut taxes. That's what Republicans are about. We're not about Obama's plan, about infrastructure and taking federal money from the stimulus to increase our infrastructure. We want our freedoms back. The only way we can be a free people is to eliminate our debt. We have to be economically sound, so we need to cut taxes. We can sit here and claim that we have raised property taxes, that's true. However, when you go to the restaurants, a company's goal, we raised from 3% to 1.5% on the restaurant tax. We have over 20 revenue sources in this county, our car, to have them licensed, that fee has gone up in the last few years. So even though we're not raising property taxes because the state law said you can only be in a 55-45 balance, and we're already at 55%, we're still raising other places because we gotta have this money somewhere. My plan is to cut taxes, put the money back in your pocket, and create real economic growth, like we as Republicans know, because we were shown it in the 80s, we've just forgotten it and we need to get back to it. I'm Greg Graves.
You want to know specifically something from your private sector experience that will help you as a county commissioner? Yes, just this time.
I've been working in the software industry for the last 20 years. I have been a project manager, I have dealt with big budget projects, multimillion-dollar budgets, but in addition to that, for the last 20 years, I've been a servant of the community for the last 20 years, working with commissioners, working with mayors, working with city council, and with law enforcement. Jim Tracy is a close friend of mine, and because of this unique experience that I personally had, I've been in a position to keep a close eye on city government and county government, along with everything that all of us are watching coming down from the federal level. Frankly, it makes me nervous, and that's why I'm in this.
Okay, I'm a recovery lawyer. I was a, I was a trial lawyer for a while, I was a felony prosecutor in the county attorney's office, I was in the civil division where I advised all of the elected officials in the county in my, my young career. I have run a business, I have run law firms, I have, as such, I sat on, I was the only person appointed from the state of Utah, so the governors or the presidents and the congresses, National Committee on Criminal and Judicial Justice. I've done a lot of that stuff on a state and a national level, I have run budgets, and I think, you know, I taught, I was an Ashout professor at, at UCU for a while during my practice of law. Life career is varied, and I represented a lot of people, a trial lawyer, proven the fight, and have an understanding of finance, worked with bond counsel for quite a while. I'd love to talk to you about that. Thank you.
I've been the, I've been in sales through much of my whole life. I, I followed a printing company in Provo called Community Press for many years, and I started selling for them quite a few years ago. One of the things that I've learned about in sales is, that I think you could apply, that I've applied actually as a city council as well, and as a commissioner, is there's a, there's a great way to lose clients, and that is by over-promising and under-delivering. I have learned that when you promise somebody or tell someone what they want to hear and not what you can accomplish, that they lose trust in you. I won't do that. I will make sure that, that before I commit to something, I will know the facts, and that I'll base my decision on, on those facts. Thank you.
Okay, I have two bachelor's degrees. The first one I have in business administration, and I worked as a corporate officer and also as a finance and credit manager for several years. One of those jobs, I traveled the United States opening different locations and managing several hundred people and hundreds of million dollars worth of assets, marketing and increasing from that. And then I also did sales for a little while, and the last seven years I've become a business and marketing high school teacher. I left the business world to come and be an educator so that I could inspire young people. That is what I love to do. I'm also pretty good in the fight, because a lot of you, the other, I'm a referee, so I know how to handle myself in any tough situation. So, you know, what is worse than a lawyer? That is worse than a lawyer. And I don't give a here as well as a lawyer, that is for damn sure. That would require a big tax increase and a burden for them.
Okay, next question is, recently, and this isn't obviously direct bearing on what you will do as a commissioner, but still a question that people are hearing, so. Recently, we've had a challenge to the caucus system from the Count My Vote initiative, and as we had that up, the state legislature passed that Bill 54, making some relatively drastic changes to the caucus system. I want to know your opinion on whether you think that will improve the caucus system or hurt the caucus system, and why?
I'm not sure if it'll improve or hurt the caucus system at all. I'm a caucus guy, by the way. I understand the, the argument for the Catcher Vote people, and that was that the caucus system can get hijacked, and it has impacts. Where special interests have come in, they've had an agenda, they've packed the caucuses, and, you know, they've kinda taken things over. We have learned how to fight that. We have taught this candidates among ourselves, and this group of delegates is the most amazing set of delegates we've had. You, you have no agenda, you wanna know what's going on, and that's why the caucus system will work. I think the caucus system is alive and well, and as long as we're involved with it and the level you are, it's gonna be fine. This is the way to do it. You can't buy an election with the caucus system. You gotta earn the election.
I actually did agree with Gary on that. No agreement, well, I'm honest. You know, I served as our precinct chair two years ago in my precinct, and I learned a lot about being a delegate. I learned a lot, how, I learned how important this system is. I think these last three weeks have been an indicator that this system works. We have had rules every single day with, with at least this amount of people who are asking quality questions about the people that they want to represent and need to represent. As long as we are doing our homework as delegates, as long as we are having an open mind, and as long as we don't have some kind of hidden agenda, and we are, we are really wanting to know who and what quality and influence visual we want to represent us, and I think this system works. Thank you.
I too am in complete, complete favor of the caucus system. However, I do think it gets hijacked because I know a lot of people, at least in our precinct, that would like to have their caucus vote back based on Senator Hatch. So the fact is that they can get hijacked, and so I disagree. You can't outstand and outpromise and over-deliver in a caucus. So it is important, though, to keep the caucus system because if we have Catcher Vote, you're allowed to just go by 1,000 signatures or 1,500 signatures, you can absolutely hijack an election, but it can happen in the caucus system. We need to approach them with an open mind rather than saying, "Yeah, I'm gonna vote for Senator Hatch because President Romney is gonna happen." Well, that kinda backfired on us, so we do need to be careful, and I am in full support of the caucus system, have done correctly.
Because of the caucus system, we are all here tonight, we're believers in it. If we went to primaries, it would be the guy with the deepest pockets winning the elections. This is where we can stand face-to-face, look our opponent in the eye, and we can say, "You know, Commissioner, you say H for Anderson. The public record says some of the meetings you've been attending, H stands for absentee. You missed half your meetings on the water board last year. You've, a grandmother's crest for your records shows that you're outspending, the other commissioners two to one on your travel with additional added to that. And your salary not only increased from $69,000, 30%, but it's doubled, you're making over $150,000, over $200,000 with benefits and cafeteria spending."
You know what? This has been going around for a while, and I'm not gonna invent, I'm not gonna get involved in making a campaign. That is nonsense. Go look at my loan record, go look at my attendance record, that is simply untrue. Getting tired of that. And the thing that bothers me is you know it's untrue.
You agree with that?
Yeah, well, just be quiet, let me talk for a minute. You know, it's not true, talk to anybody, I see people all free here from work. You go talk to them and see if I go to my meetings. I start about 7:30 in the morning, finish at about 10:30 at night, weekends, holidays, all kinds of things. I go to my meetings, I work hard, but that is nonsense, and frankly, I'm getting a little tired of it.
All right, this is the last question. It's slightly different because we have one comment and three challenges, so I think you can hear that, hopefully you can see how the question's slightly different for people. For everyone, what's your top priority to do, and essentially how long do you think it's gonna take you to do it? How many times do you need to be commissioner to get done what you need to do? Mr. Anderson, of course, you're already running again, so tell us your top priority of what you wanna finish up in this, your executive term, however you want to look at it. And then everyone else, your top priority and how long you think it'll take you to do it?
It's tough to say top priority. I would say, I would probably have to say transparency, because that can cover so many different things. That can cover budget issues, that can answer some of the debt issues that we have. If we as residents were educated a little more from our county commissioners and our county on where our money is being spent, how much money, how much is being spent, what is being spent on, I think we have a little better understanding and we would maybe be a little more supportive about the money being spent. I think there needs to be transparency on our website a little more. As I try to dive in and look at our budget and the spending, I'm often confused, I'm not able to find the information that I want. And so I think, I think transparency and, you know, someone asked me, "Who do the commissioners report to? Who do they, who do they have to sign off with?" And it's each other and us. And I think us being those that they have to answer to should be able to be educated in the issues that they're dealing with. Thank you.
Easy for me. The very first and most important item for me is the debt. We've gotta get a hold of our debt because with debt, the term bonded debt to me is horrible. Who in here wants to be in bondage and be bonded? I don't. So that's first and foremost, because to me, that is a lot of issues. It's creating real economic growth, which needs to happen, real economic growth, sustainable economic growth that has plans, which creates jobs, doesn't just bring in businesses and we say, "Oh, great, Adobe's here." But the reality is they bought Onmature a couple of years ago and moved that office from Orem to Lehigh. Our jobs have actually not risen by very small percentages, less than 1% over the last four years according to our financial reports. So we need real economic growth, we need to get out of just the 5.5% unemployment that we have and do better. We can do better. We have people that are willing to go and do it. We need to limit the role of government by doing that, that also eliminates our debt.
If I may, before I begin, I would defer my rebuttal to Commissioner Anderson, so he may have an opportunity, so I won't have a rebuttal in any of it, if I may. My number one issue is the water supply. Last week in Spanish Fork, we brought up the fact that 12 wells have been dug over at Geneva, and the lion sheriff that's going up to Salt Lake County. Commissioner Anderson indicated otherwise. I checked around and found out, indeed, it is going to Salt Lake County. The federal government is encouraging here on us, putting our water supply off limits to us, raising the arsenic levels to a point that they're saying drinking water we've been drinking for 50 years is now undrinkable. We really need to become bulldogs here and guard home plate and push back on the, on federal incursion through many divisive programs that they put into place. This is a time to show up to meetings and be accountable and be fighters, and we need to bring in all of you. We're not gonna be able to do it by ourselves. This is gonna be all us working together. Thank you.
You know, it's hard to hit down one big thing, growth and all of the things that have to do with our bases, water, transportation, all of those things. I think the best, the highest priority I have is that government needs to, government needs to do what government's supposed to do, and that is be as small and as lean and as uncrucial as possible. Government should only do that, which you can't do in your cities, and that's what we should do. That has to do, for example, with debt, you can't, with bonded debt, you can't build roads for yourself. It's like having a mortgage. You gotta buy your house, you do that with a mortgage. We don't, we have mortgages in Utah, Kevin, that's why we have, that's why we have three ways to load. We don't have any credit cards yet, and we never will. So, you know, you need somebody who understands that sort of thing, you need somebody who's got a plan, and you need somebody who, thank you very much.
Everybody? Yes. Oh, you have it.
The last question, please. Okay, you have a 30-second rebuttal? Okay, take your rebuttal, and then you'll have a 90-second closing argument, and I'll go with whoever has the 90 seconds. He has total two minutes on her, right, two minutes this time, because he's rebutted eight answers.
Two minutes?
Two.
So one minute left.
Thank you. I do understand finance and economics. That's my bachelor's degree that I went to school to study, and I teach to two of your kids every day. The fact is, it's not hard to understand that eight years ago there was zero bonded debt, and I understand there are needs in a society. However, I've heard this story before. There's a man about a few thousand miles away who lives in a white house that says, "Build my infrastructure, let's go into debt. Trust me, debt will get us out in slow economic times." It's not working there, and it's not working here. My plan is simple, cut the government, cut everything that we can. There are things, you're right, we can't live without, water being one. We need to have a plan for sustainable water, we need to have roads that are properly maintained. However, the county only has $2.8 million in a budget for road repair a year, and a county that takes in $550-plus million of taxes, that's not what they all have, but is accountable and spending over $300 million in special districts and all sorts of things, that's not very big. So how big of an issue is really transportation in this county? Most of our roads are completely Most of our roads are controlled by the state and by the cities. There's very few of us really impacted by the county transportation plan. It's really a UDOT plan that the county sits in and has a little bit of say. But we can do better. The reality is, is the plan we need to do is we need to cut property taxes. The reason we can't raise them is because they're at the highest rate allowed by law. 55% is the max allowed. Our state constitution says that there must be a 45% discount. So therefore, if you're taxing at 55% of the value, what kind of policy is that? It's not a policy. It's like, hey, here we go. There you, that's what we're going to take. So the reality is, if we cut that by 5%, the county only takes in $40 million of property tax. That 5% cut needs to come out of the county, and the $40 million of property tax the county takes, that's only $2 million. Well, between six people, three commissioners and their admin assistants, the county budget is at $1 million. We can do better.
Okay, really quickly, sorry, hold it for one second, please. Nobody answered how long it would take you to do, and we all want to know. We're calling you on card for that, gentlemen. So give me like a one sentence answer, how long?
Not more than eight years. If Reagan can do it, I can do it.
I knew Ronald Reagan, and you know Ronald Reagan.
Well, I know how to use the internet. You're intended to three out of beta, the water district too, so.
But I need, so I need everyone just quickly to say how long it's going to take you, and then you can go into the rest of your next question. When they're all done, applause is okay. Okay, everyone, stop for Greg, because he's already done. Now, after each spin of the word drive, please, off the set.
The county has an $86 million budget, 46.5 of that goes to law enforcement. Property taxes that the county takes in are only about 10% of what you're paying. The rest is taken by your city, the lion's share by your school district. And when your school district is bonding and buying and building new schools, those are usually driving up what you're paying in whatever locality you are in the county. When we say we're going to cut taxes in half, the mill levy hasn't been changed in about 15 years. So we're on about a 15-year rate. We are on an every-year evaluation of the properties where it used to be five. So this is really just a bunch of rhetoric about taxes. If anyone says they're going to cut your taxes, they're just blowing smoke in your or up your backside. We, does that mean one minute and six seconds? Thank you. We really need to look through the rhetoric and look for the ideology of each of the candidates. Who really is going to show up to work, be about the business, minding the store, making sure no hands are in the till, investing money? We've had investments over the past, we've had commissioners putting liens on your property for your property mineral rights. We just need to have a good person with good ideology who's not talking a bunch of rhetoric about impossible things. I don't think anyone can lower taxes in this county lower than they are. I would like to see it, a flat tax rate, maybe a sales tax rate, no property taxes. That would be outstanding. But it's rhetoric unless we're all buying in and we take it to the November referendum and vote for it. We all have to go together on this. It's not one of us by ourselves. It's all of us together. My name is Howard Stone. I would be honored and humbled to have your consideration. Thank you.
I want to say, I know all these guys. I've worked with all of them. I've known Greg since he was born, and love the guy, and he is, he is a smart kid. And when I said, you know, I was kidding, you know, I was kidding, because he and I were. But let me tell you, our budget is $70 million. We have, we collect $307 million. Howard was right, 80% of that goes to the school district, some of it goes to the city. We get about 9 or 10%. We have $70 million we can control. We have the lowest tax rate in the state of Utah, except for Suma County, who has all of those ski lifts. We have the lowest number of county employees per capita. We are, we are low, and we are cheap, and we will keep doing that. We're not going to provide any services that are absolutely necessary. We'll build your roads for you, we'll protect you, and then we're going to try to get the heck out of your way. I think that's what government ought to do. I appreciate the people who are running. I really do. I want you to know that, and that's not long spoken, Greg. I've known Greg for a long time, I've known Howard for a long time, I've known Johnny for not so long time, but I've heard Johnny sing, and my goodness. And so these are good men. And just remember that, everybody here, everybody in this room is a Republican, everybody in this room wants the same thing. We may have some different styles, all I want you to do is do what Howard said. Go look at my track record, go look at my attendance record, go look at my, talk to people who have worked with me, and give these guys some consideration, too, because they're working hard, we're all working hard. We appreciate you being here, we appreciate what you're doing, and yes, A is for Anderson. I think that ever gets old, you know?
I want to tell you guys a little bit about my slogan, I'm pretty, my happy face on all my posters with, "Let's do this." And I want to tell you where I came from. I had a brother-in-law who, about 10 years ago, when I ran for city council, was on the city council, and he came to me and said, you know what, if you really want to make a difference, then you ought to look at running for county commissioner. And so I told him, you know, maybe someday, I'm a Lehigh boy, I've been raised there, I want to do things in Lehigh. About five years ago, you know, Bagatini and Bagatini, and so I finally said, all right, I will, one day I committed to him that I'll look at this as an opportunity and it's an option. And on January 30th, our family's life changed greatly. That's when we lost my brother-in-law Cory Wright. He was a deputy that was killed in Eagle Mountain. And I had the unfortunate opportunity to drive my in-laws to the hospital to tell his wife Nan, they're here tonight, and I want to thank them for the support of being here. Now I just look at them, I shouldn't have. But as I got to the hospital and as we told Nan what had happened, she pulled me aside after a little while, and she hugged me and she looked at me in the eye and she said, "I know the commitment that you made to Cory a long time ago, and it's time, right now, it's time to do this." And I said, Nan, I don't know if I'm up to it, I don't know if I'm prepared, I can't do this alone. And she looked at me and she said, then let's do this. That's why, that's why I threw my hat in the rain. But I think I bring other things to the table as well, experience in Lehigh, experience with economic development, experience representing my constituents and answering to them, and being at the table, understanding that they want someone at the table with common sense and an understanding, and that's going to make the decision as if they were there. So I thank you again for being here tonight, I'm Johnny Revelle. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for being here. This turnout is amazing. It's very gratifying. I've been planning stuff like this for a long time, and half the time, two people. Not for things this big, but it is really gratifying to see you all here. Very, very good to that.
Thanks, dude. Thanks for getting off the ground.